All right, welcome to the March 13th Board of Education meeting here at Wheaton Warrenville South High School. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Ms. Blatter, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people who live here, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
I remind board members to get into your mics tonight. Just when you think you're too close, you're not too close. All right, communication from the host school, Dr. Schuler.
It's my pleasure to introduce the principal of Wheaton Warrenville South, who's going to provide the communication from our host school. Mrs. Campos, thank you for hosting our meeting tonight. Please share your update.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Lori Campos. I am the very proud principal of Wheaton Warrenville South High. On behalf of all of Wheaton Warrenville South High School, I would like to welcome you to our school. As you made your way to our library tonight, you may have passed and noticed our display cases that show our long history and our rich traditions of -- you may have also noticed the flags hanging in our commons area that represent our diversity in our school that we like to celebrate. We are extremely proud of the traditions, the excellence and pride that runs deep in our school and in our community. Many of you who are -- who know our school know that Wheaton Warrenville South High School is a very special place. We have amazing teachers and staff. We have amazing students. We have amazing families and parents, and we have an amazing community. We want to make sure that everybody who comes through our doors feels a sense of belonging. What that means to us is we want everybody to come through and feel like they're valued, heard, seen, supported, safe, and celebrated. There are so many things that we want to share tonight, and rather than talk, we've put together a video for you and our audience to see what we have experienced on a daily basis at Wheaton Warrenville South High School. So I'm going to share that now. It is a montage of the start of school up until this point. in our classrooms, in our gyms, on our stages, and on our fields. So, welcome to Wheaton Warrenville South High School.
Thank you, Ms. Campos. All right, board members, any modifications to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Hanlon, we have just one that I think was asked for in advance, off of the consent agenda items nine, 10, and 11. Those are the three items that relate to transportation, approval contracts. We've had a couple requests that the finance committee spend a little bit more time with those items, and we're fine. We concur with that. So we recommend those get pulled off of consent, moved to next month's agenda.
So all we have to do is just pull them off?
Just pull them off.
All right, great. Board is aligned with that, I believe?
Yep.
Great. Okay, thank you. All right, recognitions and achievements. Dr. Schuler, would you introduce our guests?
Yeah, we had a special reception in front of the meeting tonight to recognize two groups of students. I think as you look at our portrait of a graduate, our goals for students central to that portrait of a graduate is the desire to make sure that students are academically prepared, excellent in what they're doing. And so we recognize the group of students, or we will recognize a group of students this evening, who have been recognized through the National Merit Competition. We're also going to recognize this evening our high school students who qualified for ILMEA All-State, which again is a tremendous accomplishment. So I'd like to invite back up to the podium Mrs. Campos and Mr. Corn Toyer from Wheaton North, and they're going to lead us in our recognition this evening, so.
Okay, thank you to our friends and colleagues here at South for hosting us this evening, and thank you to the Board of Education for supporting our schools and supporting these tremendous students. We're so proud of the amazing students that we are recognizing here tonight. These students are talented, have worked extremely hard, and been dedicated to their craft. They have supportive family and friends and excellent teachers to guide and inspire them, and we're so proud of them, and thank you for taking a moment to recognize those students. So, our first two students that we'll welcome from Wheaton North are our National Merit finalist Brendan Robyn. Come on up, Brendan. And our other National Merit finalist is Caleb Valentino. Come on up, Caleb. Our Illinois Music Education All-State finalists here, Charlie Stritzel cannot be here this evening. He has All-State in viola. But Matt Hufford, if you could come up, All-State in trumpet. All-State in tuba, Zach Larikers. Come on up, Zach. Archer Mathias, All-State percussionist. Sebastian Harin Panigawa, All-State bassoon. And last but certainly not least, Ren Page, All-State cellist. Come on up, Ren. Thank you again, Board of Education, for your leadership in our community, and thank you for recognizing the efforts of these wonderful students.
Again, I'm going to ask the Wheaton North students if you'd just hang out there while we recognize the South students, and then we want to get a picture of you all together and make sure you have a chance to be thanked by the board, so hang tight for a sec.
Thank you. I would like to start out with our National Merit finalists. Our first National Merit finalist is Alex Hesterman. Please come on up. And National Merit finalist Lauren Spires. Please join us. And one of our ILMEA finalists could not be here, Dahlia Volkart, but I wanted to recognize her in her viola. And then we also have Caleb Watson in violin, if you could join us.
Students, congratulations. So our tradition when we do a student recognition with the board, if you wouldn't mind, we're going to ask you to just come by the table so each board member can congratulate you individually, so thank you.
Okay, great. All right, public comment. So, "Thank you for taking time to share your feedback and thoughtful focus on our students, school, and community. It's the board's practice not to directly discuss communication of the community until the context is fully understood and the information's explored. It's not our intention to signal a lack of interest, and we appreciate your understanding. Depending on the number of people signed up to speak during public comment, Board Policy 2.230 enables the time per speaker to be reduced from three to two minutes, allowing more people to share their perspectives. Tonight, it's been brought to my attention, there's a lot of people here to speak. I think it's important everyone gets the full three minutes, so we're going to stick with three minutes. But I would ask that you consolidate. If you're all talking about some of the same stuff, that you consolidate it to get through everybody. We have 14 speakers tonight, so that'd be helpful, but not required. Tonight, we'll not have to reduce our time. To maintain confidentiality, the board asks that any matters concerning personnel or students be communicated to the board privately. When we meet, it's important that we all treat each other with the kindness and respect. We set an example for our schools and desire to honor that by being courteous in our public comments. Let's work together to lead with positive intent so that our democratic process reflects the best of our community. To help us follow up if needed, please include your name, and if you're a resident of the district. To ensure everyone has a chance to speak, Ms. Cullabut will raise her hand when 15 seconds remain as a reminder to wrap up your thoughts. At the end of our agreed time, I will respectfully ask you to allow the next speaker to begin." The other thing that was brought to my attention is I've not been very diligent in holding people to their three minutes, so tonight I will do that, just give everybody a fair shot. So if I have to cut you off, I apologize in advance, and I'll try to do it in a way that we can have a soft landing, right? But I just want to make sure we're on our three minutes, and I adhere to the rules. Thank you for investing your time to attend the board meeting and share your thoughts and encouragement for our district. All right, our first speaker tonight is Rachel Padron. Padron, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Hello and good evening to the District 200 Board, present administration, parents, students, and community members. My name is Rachel Padron, and I am a parent of two children at Wheaton Warrenville South High School. I am an active volunteer at Wheaton Warrenville South and have volunteered in various capacities throughout our 12 years with students in the district. I stand before you this evening to challenge the administration and the District 200 Board to think outside of the box and work to improve upon the safety, culture, and communication in our schools, to look at our current practices, to ensure that we are doing everything we can to create an environment where kids feel safe, a strong sense of responsibility and community to each other and the staff, and are aware of the many opportunities that lie ahead of them. While others may ask about the specific disciplinary actions taken or want more transparency from administration on what occurred during recent events, I want to know, how did we get here? How did we get to a place where our kids disregard their fellow students and resort to violence? A place where there is so little respect for their learning environment and the leadership that they do not fear engaging in such violence in our own halls, on campus, and in the bathrooms? The culture here is that rules exist but are not regularly enforced. They are not met with consistency in communication or in consequence. If you are going to have a rule, you must consistently communicate this rule. Everyone in the building must follow this rule, and the consequence, no matter how inconvenient or how charming the offender, be regularly doled out. Otherwise, teens know, none of your rules really matter. Leaders are important. Teens need role models, people they respect. Liking someone and respecting someone are not the same thing. You can like someone and not respect them, and you can respect someone but not like them. I ask all of you, are our current hired leaders the same people you think of when you envision a true leader? Do they have the respect of students, staff, and parents? Are they good role models? Are they professional on and off campus? Do they portray the excellence we expect educationally of our students? Do they treat everyone with equal respect and engagement? Do they embody what you want our school to be, the best that District 200 can be? This is important because our leaders are the face of our schools, they reflect how we perceive ourselves, and how the greater community perceives us. We ask that the hiring practices in District 200 make sure that no --
Ms. Padron, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Our second person from the public is Andrew Padron.
Hello? Is this good?
Yeah, you're good.
Can you guys hear me? Ladies and gentlemen, I am Andrew Padron, and I stand before you not just as a junior here at South, but as a concerned voice representing the sentiments of my peers. About a month ago, every student at South was required to complete the Five Essentials survey provided by the University of Chicago, a tool to record honest feedback of the school by those in attendance. At this time, I reflect on the different parts of our school, such as the hallways, classrooms, and bathrooms. Unfortunately, I, along with many of my peers, already felt unsafe and uncomfortable in some of these spaces. While the recent adjustments to the bathrooms and halls set in place by the administration do make these parts of the school safer than before, it seems that the administration only acknowledges and responds to problems when the public spotlight falls upon them. The general trend of this administration is to downplay our reality. Safety and security should be the first priority of any school other than teaching. While the recent actions taken to better the security of the bathrooms are helping, they fail to accomplish a permanent change in our schools. Our bathrooms are not a safe and useful space for students, and we see no substantial change in the foreseeable future. The obvious lack of care that the school has towards the student facilities is alarming, with stall doors missing, locks destroyed, as well as vaping, drugs, and countless fights that thrive off of such a repulsive environment. I, along with my peers, have been invaded of our privacy over the years here at South. Scenarios such as kicking open stall doors while students are inside and throwing food and drinks inside stalls that are being used. The request from my peers and I is to create a student, a school environment, and mindset that encourages collaboration and supporting others. One great example of this was advisory, which unfortunately was only exclusive to only the middle schools, and only became a frequent thing during COVID. Advisory allowed a small group of students and a teacher to communicate and connect with each other, allowing for a stronger and tighter bond between students. As I transitioned into high school, I felt that this connection between me and my peers had diminished. The empathy that used to be overwhelming in my earlier school years is suddenly absent, an essential skill that is used throughout adulthood, something that high schools should be preparing us for. Introducing advisory into our high schools would create a sense of responsibility and family between students and teachers, creating a tighter bond that will weave the classes together. And the consequences. Everyone at the school is told that if the rules are not respected, you'll be given the appropriate consequences. However, as seen with the most recent fight, these consequences are not enough and are irregularly doled out. Punishments are meant to discourage and teach students about what they have done wrong and not to do it again. While this keeps most of the students' behavior in check, it does not do so for all. Students that are doing inappropriate things at school are aware of the consequences that will occur, yet they continue to do them. They repeat their offenses because they know that the punishment, at its worst, will be missing 10 days of school.
Our third speaker tonight will be Kelly Gillan-Water.
I was asked by an administrator today if I felt safe sending my student to school. I said honestly that I have anxiety every day, knowing what I know and have experienced in my 50 years as a student, parent, grandparent, and former staff member. The cloak of anonymity needs to stop. Halt the rumors and state what the consequences for actions are when incidents happen. If students and families see that discipline is being followed through on, perhaps behaviors will change. I had hoped and prayed that after what happened to my son 13 years ago, to almost the day here at South, and the lack of action by administration, things would have changed. No one from the school notified us of the felony one aggravated assault until the DuPage County State's attorney served us with a summons to appear in court. Five months later. Detailing the incident. My son came home that day of the assault stating he had a headache, nothing more. The reason he didn't tell us about the incident is the fight he defused was nothing new when it came to his assailant. This student had been in our school since elementary and was always in trouble, until I went to court and asked for it to be lowered to a misdemeanor. Did I learn of his lengthy rap sheet in and outside of the school and community? He was a very violent person sitting amongst our students and allowed to return time and time again. I was informed that students who fall under the ADA, Title IX homelessness, parent in prison, to name just a few, are treated differently, basically making our student handbooks a guideline. There are two thick volumes of loopholes that allow students to remain in schools when they are putting our children at risk. We have students who have not set foot inside a building in over two years with severe learning and physical disabilities waiting for outplacement, yet we allow students who repeatedly harm others to walk through the doors of our schools every day. Ticking time bombs. Whether it be the bully or the victim, someone eventually snaps. When our children set foot on school grounds, the rules should be the same for every child. Same opportunities, and they need to behave accordingly and held to standards that are set by the district. Race, culture, religion shouldn't matter or play into what is deemed acceptable or not. According to Senate Bill 100 and ISBE, we need to treat students differently because of their race and culture. Dole out discipline based on what the race and culture deem acceptable. This creates an inequitable environment and sends a message to students that some can get away with certain behaviors and others cannot. Parents and students expect and demand accountability and to be treated equally.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Williams Beebar? Apologize if I didn't get that right. Oh, there you go. How's that? Better? Thanks. So our next speaker is Karen Williams Beebar. I think I got that right. Am I close? Beebar? Oh, right. Thank you. Hey.
Sorry, couldn't hear you. Good evening.
Yep.
My name's Carrie Williams Beebar. I am a proud district parent and I have served as a PTA Vice President, CAC Committee Member, and Subcommittee Secretary, as well as a DEI Liaison. I'm here to share my concerns around student safety, emergency procedure, and communication raised by the February 28 altercation, as well as offer some hopefully constructive suggestions for moving forward. February 28 exposed growing edges in student safety as it pertains to violence in the high school. I think that it would be helpful for the Board and administration to look at the violence metric and ask if it is at a comfortable threshold. If it is not, then this body, or perhaps a designated task force, could seek creative solutions, looking towards other districts that have been successful in safeguarding students in relatively unsupervised spaces like lunchrooms, libraries, and bathrooms. My concern with emergency procedures stems from the 14 minutes it took to call 911 after it was clear that a student had been beaten to the point of unconscious. while I don't want to diminish in any way the good action of those who responded to the crisis, which is a difficult thing to do, I think it is worth reviewing emergency procedures, seeing if there is room for improvement, and if so, retraining staff members. Finally, the communication to school families following the altercation lacked both transparency and a basic level of compassion. In my own reflection, I have wondered if this was due to the school administration's immunity to violence, as in there have been so many fights that a tolerance has built up, resulting in a grossly insufficient response. Or if the emails that went out to families minimized the seriousness of the altercation in an effort to obfuscate a bigger problem of violence and protect the institution. Neither a tolerance to nor obfuscation of violence ought to be acceptable in this or any community. I think it would be healthy to investigate why the response was so inadequate and set standards for clear and sincere communication in the future. While the work before you is great, I've no doubt that this Board and administration are up to the task. Thank you.
Thank you. So our next speakers are Nicholas Graham and Avani Baradwa. Sorry, Avani, I probably didn't do that very well.
Hello, everyone. My name is Nicholas Graham and I'm a senior at Wheaton-Warrenville South. Considering the line of speech is quite long, I do my best to keep this brief. The reaction that the administration of this school has had to the current violence occurring at South has been downright disappointing. Instead of focusing on promoting safety in our schools and punishing those partaking in violence in a manner that effectively mitigates this kind of behavior, the school has decided to punish the student body as a whole. Make no mistake, the closing of bathrooms and rules-changing hall passes are merely a show to make it seem like this administration knows what it's doing. These rules do nothing to address violence at the school, especially when a portion of that violence occurs during lunch, at a time where no hall passes are involved. Additionally, locking down bathrooms doesn't curb situations that lead to violence or the violence itself, rather it just stops ordinary students from going to the bathroom. The only thing this rule serves to change is the location of the violence taking place. So it's clear that these new rules don't fix the problem at hand, which is that of violence in our schools. I won't claim to know how to fix these issues, but those who are in positions of power in the administration should be. And it's clear that that's not the case. I'm not the only one who thinks this, as I'm sure you've heard from your own kids or from other speakers tonight, that some at the school are not satisfied with these changes. To wrap this up, I just want those in the community to know what's going on at South and how the students in the building feel about it. And I hope the administration will make necessary changes to protect students at South, as I can't think of any more pressing issue than the safety of students whilst getting their education.
My name is Avani Baradwa and I'm also a senior at Wheaton-Warrenville South. I would like to add that the violence problems we have in our school are not due to us having violent students. Rather, it is due to the countless amounts of unaddressed racism. Had students felt confident that when expressing incidents with racism, that the administration would appropriately handle the situations, we wouldn't have so many situations resulting to violence. We have a festering problem of racism that our administration continues to allow in our halls. Racism takes many forms. While it can be very obvious, much of it is more difficult to identify, but has a profound impact on our students. I want to stress, it's not that we have violent students. Rather, we have a culture that continues to accept the racism and disrespect between one another. This racism is not only between students, rather it's a chronic cycle between many members in our community that makes students feel constantly disrespected and causes them to lash out. I'm not trying to justify the violence that has occurred in the past few weeks, only providing a student's perspective on a way to move forward and a place to focus our school's resources rather than hallway passes. I'd like to conclude this by saying, the love I have for my school is immeasurable. It is my second home. I have a great relationship with my teachers and the principals, but this is an aspect of our school we need to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, 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 please. Since when do we boo students in this school? Seriously. Please control yourself. That's inappropriate. It is inappropriate to boo-- ma'am, it is inappropriate to boo a student in this school. We're not going to stand for that. Please, sir, please stop. Please stop. Our next speaker is Joel Anderson.
My name is Joel Anderson and I'm the father of three District 200 kids, one at South and two at Edison. They're here with us tonight and my wife Lisa and I are so, so proud of them. There are a lot of people here tonight to address the school board about child safety in our District 200 schools, especially given the recent incident at Wheaton-Warrenville South. We are so sad to hear about this sort of behavior from students and certainly do not condone it in any way. Our story to you is a little bit different. Back in December, our two youngest boys were pushed in anger by a teacher and coach at Edison Middle School. As a board, you have received an email from my wife and I outlining the entire situation and how it has been mishandled by the school. First, ECFS was never called by mandated reporters until we alerted them that it is a requirement. And second, that the district was not made aware of the situation by the school until my wife emailed the day before our kids were to return to school, almost three days later. You cannot believe our shock when a situation involving an adult putting their hands on two children did not apparently rise to the level of seriousness that the school would inform leaders at the district level. During the investigation, the teacher was on administrative leave. During the investigation, we went to the Wheaton Police. The sergeant in charge of our report stated he would not push our file through as he stated that this happens all the time on courts and soccer fields everywhere. He also included in his documentation that we should allow the school district to handle these matters. My wife begged and pleaded to have them press charges. He stated that the teacher was disciplining our boys. Our boys were not needing to be disciplined with physical contact. We are disappointed with the Wheaton Police and that they refuse to put the safety of our children first. This lack of action put this teacher right back in the classroom with our and all Edison children as of this past Monday.
We as parents understand that an adult might
Take your turn.
might need to put their hands on our children in discipline if and only if they are at risk to harm themselves or others. Neither of my children acted in this way. The school district has concluded that since this teacher has no other documentation in his HR file, he is allowed to remain in close proximity with children in the classroom, a classroom with many children, all who could make him frustrated at any time. They're all middle schoolers. We hope to draw attention to the fact that this policy exists in our district, that it is unacceptable and would not be tolerated in any other place of work. as parents, administrators, and school board members, we must be better for our kids. We are asking you to reconsider bringing this teacher back into the classroom this year. Per board policy, a teacher may be dismissed if it is in the best interest of the school and the safety of its students. If the Wheaton Police will not act, if the school administrators won't act, if the superintendent will not act, then we ask you, our elected school board, to put the safety of our kids as your number one priority. Joel and I could stand up here and say more, but our brave son Tyler would like to address you and tell you his story. He is talking for his brother, his friends, other District 200 students, and we are so proud of him.
Hello, my name is Tyler Anderson and I am an eighth grade student at Edison Middle School. And this is my brother Riley.
Hey Tyler, can you get just a little closer to the mic?
Yeah, that'd be good. He is a seventh grader as well. On Friday, December 8th, both me and my brother were pushed in anger by our coach and teacher. We were at basketball practice and my brother had gotten fouled hard while our coach was reffing a scrimmage. My brother was on the ground. When I walked off the court, I asked the coach, "How is that not a foul?", sticking up for my younger brother. Seconds after speaking to him, he blew his whistle and pushed me to the bench in anger and shouted at me, and then he shouted at and pushed my younger brother Riley too. I did not use my hands, body, or actions in violence towards this coach and teacher. I have been taught not to do that by my parents. I do not understand why he thought he needed to use his hands to discipline me, as the police, the school, and the coach are claiming. My mom had set up a meeting with the coach, the assistant principal, my mom, and my brother and me. We were hoping to get some sort of resolution. We were all able to speak. The coach went first and said that he did push us in anger, but he didn't really apologize. He just stated that we made him frustrated. At the end of the meeting, my mom asked the coach if he thought he was the best person to be our coach. He got up, yelled at my mom that he quit because that is what she wanted. He told us that he did not have any more time for this meeting and he left. To be honest, my mom started crying because she was so shocked and confused. The assistant principal didn't know what to do either. This coach and teacher's actions do not reflect what a coach and a teacher are supposed to be. The only solution offered to me and my brother and me is that we either had to go to another school or to switch classes or remain with this teacher in the classroom because he's the only seventh grade fast-paced science teacher. My brother and I returned to school today and I'm so proud of my brother, he decided to go right back into that teacher's class. Everyone is telling me and my brother that we can switch schools to be away from this teacher or we can switch classes so that we can feel safe. All my brother and I wanted was to complete this school year and not have to see this coach or teacher again. The adults do not care. My parents told us to hold our heads high as we have done nothing wrong and that no adult has the right to put hands on us in anger. Although Riley although Riley and I do not feel safe being at Edison with this teacher, we are not going to back down and change our schedules or school because an adult cannot control his anger. I hope when he saw us today, he saw how strong my brother and I are and how well my parents have raised us. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Our next our next speaker our next speaker is Daniel Gonzalez? Got it right?
I'd like to talk to you as a parent first. I have some concerns about the recent response to the rumor, the email that we got about a rumor, and I was really disappointed because I thought it was in relation to the violence and that it was like a school shooting rumor. And I was really disappointed because I feel like it should be up to the parents to decide whether I should send my kid because my personal opinion, 1%, I'm not sending my kid to school. And I told my son to make his best judgment and to come home, come home if he feels like, if he heard something, you know, going around. And as a staff member, I'm eight at one of those schools and, you know, I read the stuff online about the bullying and the violence. Excuse me, I'm really nervous. And I've seen that it's staff members that really are the hearts and that there is a lack of inclusivity with students and, you know, whether they have disabilities or having a difficult time at home, that the staff members are not taking that in consideration and they, you know, they encourage isolating these children even more by not by, I guess, encouraging classes to bully, like stating, "Well, that's weird and that's inappropriate. We're just going to ignore that." You know, not taking into consideration that this student is in a special ed class that's in a, you know, that's in a general ed, you know, gym class or something like that. As well as staff members who get physical, I've seen it, it's disappointing. I don't know whereby concerns that I voiced, I don't know where they go. I don't hear follow-up, but I see a lot of even verbal assaults to students and it's really disappointing and concerning.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Harold Longs. Our next speaker is Harold Longs. You can't hear me?
Good evening. My name is Harold Longs and I'm a resident of District 200. I would like to start by wishing a speedy and full recovery of the Wheaton South student who was brutally attacked two weeks ago. At the last board meeting, I was shocked and appalled that the administration and the board did not mention that a Wheaton South student was taken to the hospital earlier that day and wished him or her for a speedy recovery. Why? Is it because the district did not want to make any public statement and keep everything quiet? Your lack of transparency and compassion paid off. The student attack went viral, the video went viral across the country. You guys must be proud of your recognition. Dr. Shuler sent out an email last Wednesday saying there were rumors circulating about the discipline and events at Wheaton South. To resolve the rumor issue, how about telling the parents and the public what rumors are false? After the State Attorney's General Office got involved and scheduled the attacker's first hearing, magically, the district and the Wheaton PD put out a statement the night before. Who believes in coincidences? Next, I want to discuss the Monroe TikTok video. At the last board meeting, two teachers were reprimanded for their actions regarding the TikTok video. There were no comments by any board member or administration condoning their actions. Why? More troubling was the person who released the security video complete silence. Was this person disciplined? We don't need a name, but we need to know what the consequences was. Silence again. How about the parents and the public going to trust the administration when events happen and nothing is said? At the end of the last board meeting, two parents made public comments regarding the Monroe incident. It was discussed and voted on by the board earlier in the meeting and no one from the administration or the board returned any response to their comments during the meeting. Basically, the board administration will never address any public comments in public, even if the event has been discussed and researched and investigated. And after all, board members are elected officials. They're elected by They're elected by the taxpayers and the parents, and you're basically there to protect the students and protect the education system. And you guys are not doing a very good job. And I'm very disgusted what I'm hearing about Edison and everything else that goes on.
Our next speaker is Amy Erkinswick. Amy? I know, people are sitting there.
Good evening. I actually would like to take the opportunity for public comment to address the community. I wanted to just let you know of a few tools that are available to you. My goal here is to empower, equip, and enable the community to advocate for their children in what can be a very confusing and very difficult system to navigate. There are poorly advertised tools that exist in this district to help parents through situations regarding discipline, whether student-related or staff and faculty-related. If you're dealing with a discipline issue involving suspension or expulsion in regards to your own student, you have the right to what is called a review hearing. At a review hearing, you have access to a review hearing officer and potentially members of the Board of Education. If your student is a victim of bullying or harassment or violent acts and you're not satisfied with the handling of the situation or you feel that it was not resolved adequately by building leadership, you can file something called a uniform grievance. You can file it against the administrators involved and you can work towards an alternate outcome. If your child has been victimized by a staff or faculty member, whether by bullying, grooming, or assault, you may file the same uniform grievance. In the waiting, you or administrators could consider a district-issued separation plan, which puts the onus on your child to keep themselves safe from their abuser. However, we don't agree with this methodology. It does seem to be popular among the administration. If the grievance does not result in an adequate decision or solution, you can file an appeal to the grievance. Only at this point is your grievance presented to the Board of Education, whose seven-person board would, in this case, act as judge and jurors as opposed to a single administrator deciding on the validity of your testimony. The uniform grievance process is the only process through which the district considers a report official. Additionally, the Illinois Association of School Boards offers in their guidance that members of the public who are directly involved in a matter which has which has a basis for a closed-meeting executive session may attend the meetings to give testimony regarding a complaint against an employee who is being discussed in regards to discipline. And then to the board, aside from your code of ethics, your board policies, which you have the power to change, the requirement to comply with the Open Meetings Act and with the Freedom of Information Act statutes, as well as not acting or speaking individually on behalf of the board as a whole, you are beholden to no further guidance or regulations. Now is the time to engage with your constituents and to work towards positive change because no one here in this district deserves to feel like their student's experience doesn't matter and that nothing will change.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brooke Gennaro. Brooke Gennaro?
My name is Brooke Gennaro. I have two children at Weasbrooke. We have humbly given the district our children, willing and ready to learn, to help them develop both academically and socially. Our most prized possessions in life, and along with those, our tax dollars. Here, my fellow district parents, is where we have taken a misstep. Lions do not lose sleep over the opinions of sheep. How much longer will we allow our Board of Ed and district leadership to continue to sacrifice our children's safety, feed their families with our money, and refuse to deliver accountability and transparency? The lack of accountability and leadership breeds dangerous complacency. What is the threshold that needs to be met in order for you to ease the mental fortitude students must bring with them to school every day? It clearly isn't faculty and/or student-led physical and emotional aggression. It isn't grooming behavior that violates handbook codes, and it was not the suicide of a former student whose district teacher was found guilty of 11 counts of criminal sexual assault. Our classroom and public school spaces have become dens, with predators and attackers waiting for our sheep to drop their guards and get close to them. The victims of our district grow every day, and interestingly enough, grotesquely vary by the school. Wheaton Warrenville South reported 270 discipline incidents involving a suspension or expulsion last year. Wheaton North, by comparison, reported 86. Do we need a change in administration, approach, or both? Safety- Safety in schools is not a partisan issue, it's a human one. Let this be our turning point. Let us work together to ensure our schools become sanctuaries of learning, not sanctuaries of fear. District 200 Board of Ed and leadership, as Alexander the Great said, "We are not afraid of an army of lions led by your sheep. Be afraid of our army of sheep led by a few lions." Thank you for your time. Now, please move forward with asking us for $130 million in facility updates, while our math and reading proficiency levels hover around 50% and teachers take 15 minutes to decide to get help because a student has been beaten unconscious. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Melissa Purdy. Melissa Purdy? Is Melissa- Oh, there we go.
Hi, I'm Melissa Purdy. I'm a former resident of the district. I'll keep it short, there's a lot more to the story. Two years ago, we left the district due to the constant bullying at Lincoln School, where my daughter was in fifth grade. She was picked on verbally, physically, and isolated on a daily basis. The school did nothing. We reported a prop of potential sexual predator working in the school and engaging in inappropriate conduct with the young female students. This was brought to the attention of the school's principal and social worker, and again, nothing was done. I come before you today pressing, with a pressing concern that affects the safety and well-being of all of the students here in the district. Ongoing incidents of bullying and reports of, or the lack thereof, the lack of reporting by the school officials of the sexual predators within the school community have deeply troubled us all. As guardians of our children's education and safety, it is imperative that you take decisive action to address these issues and concerns. We cannot turn a blind eye to the harm caused by such behaviors nor can we tolerate a culture of silence within our schools. I urge the board to implement stricter measures to identify, confront, and remove any individual who is engaging in bullying or predatory behaviors, whether they are staff, faculty, or students. Additionally, it is imperative that the school administration takes proactive steps to support victims and ensure their voices are heard. Our students deserve to learn and grow in an environment that is free from fear and intimidation. It is our collective responsibility to create and maintain such an environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker tonight is Marilyn Moritz.
My name is Marilyn Moritz and I live in the district. And I have recently become aware of the incident, which I read in the Pats a couple days ago, and it made me really sad. And the reason it did is because there's so much hate and inability to get along in our US world, that it's awfully hard to see it repeated in meetings like this. And instead of being supportive of whatever solutions can come about, there's simply criticism that is orchestrated and organized to be detrimental. And I was here a year ago, well, not a year ago, I was here for my first board meeting and it was speeches about the masks. And they went on with the same kind of thunderous applause after each person had their practice speeches, even engaging their young children in the speeches, as to complain about why we have to wear masks. But the irony of the whole situation at the end of the evening was that I learned as Sunday prior to that, it had been decided and announced to all the schools that there would be no need for wearing a mask, it is now going to be optional. So the whole sort of publicity incident was not even necessary. It was not relevant anymore. So I just wanted to say that at 83, and growing up in the 50s in Des Moines, Iowa, it's sad to see this kind of discord that is relegated to our board meetings instead of trying to work together to solve a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moritz. All right, we're moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Shuler?
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. So I'm gonna break the report into two parts this evening. One, just want to set a little context, and then I'm gonna ask our student ambassadors or give our student ambassadors an opportunity to share with their board colleagues a little feedback that they've asked to share, especially coming from inside of the building. And so I just want to set the context by first thanking everybody that's here tonight. We know a lot of people took time to join us, provide feedback to the board and administrative team. Respect the fact that everybody brings a perspective and we respect the right for people to express. Okay? Okay?
Ma'am, please. Ma'am? We're, sir, we're trying. We're trying. Is it the speaker? Is it too loud? Sir, please, I'm trying to solve a problem so you can hear, okay?
Why don't we take a little recess?
All right, we'll take a break and see what we can do.
Julie, how we sounding? Julie has the sound, we sounding all right? Or is it really horrible? How we sounding? Sounding all right? Everybody here? It's getting washed out, huh? Still washed, still sounding bad? Test. Test. No. This is not working anymore. Test, no. Test, test, test. Is it? Test, 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 there we go. Any better? Test.
I mean, there's so much noise out here.
Test, test, test. Good? Test, test, test.
It's just- It's too much noise.
Test, test.
All right, we're gonna return-
Test.
We're gonna return back to our meeting?
Test.
All right, we're gonna start the meeting back up? All right, we're gonna do the best we can, how about that? We're gonna do the best we can, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
As we were saying, we have a lot to be proud of in District 200. We work hard to recognize, celebrate our students and their accomplishments. You heard through a number of those things tonight, both through the planned student recognition and the report from Mrs. Campos. Our students succeed in the classroom stages, fields, courts, and in the community through their spirit, community service, and work ethic. I think it's important we never lose sight of that, even in moments of challenger crisis. We're a people business. Every day, we welcome almost 12,000 students, 1,800 adults in our schools. Thousands more parents and caregivers support the daily learning experience and are part of the culture that defines our school district. We're proud of our students, our staff, and our families. They're the reason we achieve the celebrations that were highlighted tonight. They're the reason why our learning results over the past couple of years certainly have been a shining example on a national level. We're proud, but we also recognize that moments exist where we have to address actions of our students, staff, and parents that fall outside of the expectations that have been set for them. We do and will continue to administer the school system consistent with the expectations set by the board and community through your policy guidance and strategic plan. We learn from all of our experiences, continue to get better, and work hard to create positive moments that truly define our school system. We need the partnership of the community to make this happen. Leaning into partnerships versus leaning into division will be far more impactful. Our board student ambassadors from Wheaton Warrenville South asked for an opportunity as part of their report tonight to share a perspective. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Tomas and Kaylee to do that prior to sharing the rest of my superintendent report.
Good evening. My name is Tomas Moran. I'm a senior at Wheaton Warrenville South and one of the student ambassadors to the school board. As we have done throughout the entire year, I will start with some highlights from the past month. First of all, our girls gymnastics team earned a historic third place at the IHSA State Finals. We also- The esports team also won a Fortnite state championship for the second year in a row. The speech team got seventh place in the IHSA State Finals and the youth and government delegation went to Springfield this past week. Regardless, it is imperative to recognize and address recent events which have undoubtedly impacted our school and- which have undoubtedly impacted our school and the student body. Over the past few weeks, many students have had mixed emotions, including feeling unsafe, frustrated, and confused, not only by the actual event itself, but also due to the community's response. I believe it is fundamental to express that as an ambassador, I have not only been chosen by teaching staff and administrators to do so, but I also represent the student body. Safety concerns due to recent fights and threats are completely valid and violent action is never appropriate in a school context. We as a student body will not ignore what has occurred. Consequences are necessary and we trust that they have been addressed. It must be clear that the school does not tolerate violence in any way, shape, or form. However, proactive measures as opposed to reactive ones are the best way we can ensure a sustainable approach to ensuring student safety. This is an opportunity to reassess our systems of support and take tangible action steps in preventing altercations. As ambassadors, we look forward to working with our administration to discuss proactive measures that will bring discipline clarity to our peers. Similarly, we must also acknowledge some of the discussions that have spread throughout the community in recent weeks, especially on social media. Frankly, the rhetoric that is being utilized is racist, myopic, dangerous, and endangers not only school culture, but the socio-emotional health of our students, which we as a district so vehemently said to prioritize and value. That is not to say that discussions should be discouraged, nor that everyone speaking on the matter has equal credibility. However, we are all responsible for what we say, especially the rumors that we spread. Misinformation is rampant in our society and unfortunately, this case has been no different. Racially charged and ignorant commentary on social media has gone as far as insinuating, if not supporting, racial segregation in our schools. Blaming this situation and the school's discipline issues at large on any group of students based on race or ethnicity is completely unacceptable. Although there are few who would publicly admit that they agree with such rhetoric, their voices are loud and their words have permeated our school. Instead of criticizing, I would hope that these individuals would, would take action steps to actually help our students and create not only a sustainable, but a supportive and equitable environment at our schools. As an Asian Latino and Spanish-speaking student myself, I feel that these incorrect generalizations and stereotypes only foment division, fear, and discrimination. Diversity is our greatest strength, not our downfall. The altercations that have occurred here were not justified. Likewise, utilizing them as an argument to support prejudiced statements and political agendas is also completely unjustified. It is unacceptable for a situation such as this one to be used to further agendas that no one involved ever asked to be a part of. On behalf of the students, I implore the community, as well as the school board, to not tolerate dangerous and discriminatory rhetoric, much less appease such nonsensical arguments, and to instead support and emphasize proactive measures that address the root causes of disciplinary issues in order to improve our school in an equitable manner. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kaylee McGady and I am the other student ambassador here at South. Members of the board and Dr. Schuler, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I would like to start by acknowledging all of you who have shown up here today. It is evident the safety of our school is held to high standards by the community and the members care about the well-being of our students. My job as ambassador is to connect with Tiger Nation, so I would like to report on some of the feedback Tomas and I have collected from our peers over the past few weeks. I want to express the physical safety concerns first and then pedal into the emotional aspect of this complex issue. The general consensus amongst my peers is that after the fallout of the recent events, both physical and mental safety have been impacted. Although we have had some incidents, such as the fight that went viral, our staff and administration work hard each and every day to keep us protected in this educational environment. The overall morale of our school is down, but we have the capacity to bounce back. The administration has worked tirelessly to ensure our physical safety, but the security of our emotional safety is now our priority. Despite some of the events that have occurred, our school has continued to hold clashes, classes, and push through this tough time. As Tomas explained, some of the rhetoric being used is completely unfair. I will elaborate more on the physical concerns as well as the emotional concerns tonight. After the violent event, our administration put strict rules in place to monitor the bathrooms and have cracked down on security. The students are frustrated and would like to return to a more normal state of school. However, we understand that until tension and safety needs are met, these reactive regulations are the best way to ensure our security in our school. In regards to the incident that took place, Tomas and I trust that discipline was given according to the handbook. As ambassadors, we look forward to working with our administration to discuss additional ways we can amend and convey the discipline code to our peers whilst ensuring student voices is heard. Emotional safety is a cornerstone of the issue at hand. Many rumors and snippets of misinformation have been passed online and have caused tensions to rise greatly. Tomas has already touched on the rhetoric, as I said, but we want to highlight the impact these posts are having on our school community. They have swept through the hallways of South and have been devastating to watch the fallout. This is why I want to ask the members of the board a request. I want more communication with the community on proper social media usage and the impact a few pieces of information have on the 12,000 students who go to our school. Not our school, our community schools. The students appreciate the concern and care given to our safety, but one piece of bad information can spark a whole lot of uncertainty in a time where we need to be on a united front. In closing tonight, I want to end by saying this. I pursued becoming a student ambassador because I love my school and I love my community. I intend to be a proud Tiger to graduate here and to continue to voice student concern until the end of the year. Right now, Tiger Nation needs love, support, and constructive feedback, not hatred. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tomas and Kaylee. I shift over to Ethan. Are you going to give the report from Wheaton North?
Hi, I'm a senior at Wheaton North High School. My name is Jacob Halter and as Tomas said, it is customary to give a brief update about the status and the going abouts in our schools. So as winter comes to an end, Wheaton North has begun to launch numerous spring activities and sports. Over the past weekend, our phenomenal color guard team took first place at their competition at Hershey High School and our esports team became conference champions in the popular game Super Smash Brothers. Our indoor track and field had a great showing at their meet last Saturday and we have begun to usher in our spring season of athletics. Our baseball and lacrosse seasons are underway and our spring theater production has also been kickstarted. Over the weekend, I personally had the pleasure of traveling to Springfield, Illinois to participate in the 75th Annual YMCA Youth and Government Conference, in which three attorney teams argued at the Illinois Supreme Court level and, and one group put forth a mock bill. We had the great opportunity to share a bus with the members of Wheaton Warrenville South, who themselves had a great showing over the weekend. I think I can agree with my fellow ambassadors as well as my peers that the students of Wheaton Warrenville South are some of the brightest, most caring, and passionate students that we know. Whether it be under the lights of the football field, in the depths of the pool, or in the halls of speech, Wheaton Warrenville South and its students challenges us and as well as the entire district to be better, work harder, and they constantly remind us of the standards to which we hold ourselves. I've had the privilege to work with these students, not only within this board, but also in my extracurricular activities, my place of work, and numerous facets of my personal life. While we may often adopt the appearance of rivals, the fact is our student bodies are more similar than anybody could truly comprehend. We are united in a vigorous pursuit of academic excellence, fierce competitive spirit, and a compassionate nature. I'm honored to call these students my peers and I am privileged to have them as friends. We are not defined by our worst moments, but rather by our greatest triumphs. And the students of Wheaton North and Wheaton Warrenville South are defined by their greatness and triumphs in the face of hardship. Let's just not forget, four years ago today, we were sent home unsure of what our future was going to look like. And four years later, we have become a strong, independent, and academically excellent graduating class. I would remind the members of the board, of the district, and anybody willing to listen that the relationships we foster, not only between our students, but also our faculty, is the backbone in which education and development is formed. As a student of District 200 for all my life, as an Eagle Scout, as a friend of many, I can tell you that how amazing our students are and how amazing our culture in District 200 truly is. We are trailblazers, we are diverse, and more importantly, we are a family. We ought to be characterized by the truth and the truth is that our family in District 200 is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Just a few things that I want to end with, because I mentioned I'd come back to some of the celebrations. Had the great opportunity over the weekend to attend a show choir festival here on Friday evening and into Saturday. From, from everybody that I talked to that was a part in putting this event on, kind of widely recognized as the premier event, show choir event in the country, kind of characterized as a national championship event. And what I saw was amazing talent, both from students in District 200 and the other groups that performed. Also want to recognize, quick shout out to Mr. Kish over at Franklin. This past weekend was round one of the dodgeball tournament. And from what I understand, there were a lot of people at Franklin for the dodgeball tournament for a good cause, a lot of fun, a lot of community building. So thank you to everybody for that. Want to send a quick shout out to a teacher here at South. The Illinois State Board of Education annually does an awards recognition for staff across the state. They call it those who excel. Tiffany Marconi from Wheaton Warrenville South was recognized in that recognition event. We're super proud of the work that she's done. I'm building the Intro to Education course and a number of the child development courses she teaches. She does a great job. And then finally, I want to give a quick shout out to a few members of our staff who participated over the weekend in a Warrenville polar plunge in conjunction with some of the first responder groups in Warrenville. Sean Norris, who's head football coach here at South. Bridgette and Katie are two administrators at Bauer. Both participated in that event, both had some fun, raised money for a great cause in Special Olympics. This weekend, there is a similar polar plunge happening here in Wheaton and I think Joe Kish, Holly Zimmer are both participating in that again for the same cause. And then finally, I just want to mention I had an opportunity this week to attend the Flying Tigers student faculty basketball game at Wheaton North. The Flying Tigers absolutely crushed the faculty. I, I think the faculty scored maybe three points in the game. Flying Tigers were tremendous, just great event. Really, really, really amazing to, to see the work that's happening. So I wanted to honor those celebrations.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. I'm going to read the list and we'll go from there. So first, acceptance of gift to Sandberg Elementary School. Acceptance of gifts to Monroe Middle School Eagle Honor Awards. Acceptance of gift to Monroe Middle School Band Program. Approval to post three middle school head custodian positions. Approval of the resolution to authorize transfer repayable interfund loan from working cash fund to education fund. Approval of the resolution to authorize transfer repayable interfund loan from working cash fund to IMRF fund. Approval of the resolution to authorize transfer repayable interfund loan from working cash fund to operations and maintenance fund. Approval of the resolution to authorize transfer repayable intrafund loan from working cash fund to transportation fund. We're going to skip nine, 10, and 11, those are being pulled off. Number 12, approval of bills payable and payroll. 13, approval of minutes. February 14, 2024, regular meeting open and closed. February 28, 2024, regular meeting and committee of the whole, open and closed. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to October 2022 as allowable by law. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Board members, are there any items you want removed from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Dr. Schuler, any additional information?
No, just one, a huge thank you. You're accepting three gifts this evening and we continue to be both appreciative, thankful for the amazing support we get in our schools, not only from PTA groups, but other community groups. So I just wanted to send that quick shout out, but no additional information on any items.
And remind you of the board, Mr. Jerpy is online, he's listening on the phone. So board, uh, board, are there any questions or comments? All right, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Paulson, second by Ms. Kullivitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, policy approval consent agenda. There are two revised policies on the agenda for approval tonight, including 6.230, 7.270. Board, are there any items the board members want removed from the policy approval consent agenda? All right, hearing none. Dr. Schuler.
These two policies were reviewed by your HR policy committee, brought to you at your last meeting for public review and posting. We did get one question about this policy, I think at a coffee with the board session. One of the, the two policies that, on the library book piece, I think the board is aware. We've provided some additional information for you just to help you understand the alignment of both our current practices and procedures with the language in this policy. I, I don't have any concern that the adjusted language in that policy is going to shift practice. My recommendation would be to continue to move forward with approval this evening. I think if you ever arrive at a point where your develop, your locally developed procedures are impacted by any adjustment in the policy or in the LA Bill of Rights, then I think we address it. But right now, I just wanted to make sure you knew you are aligned in current locally developed procedure and practice.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Quick question. You put together this document. Can we post this?
Yes, we will post it online.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board? All right, board, I need a motion and a second to approve the, approve the policy approval consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Kullivitz, seconded by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. We have one action item tonight, approval of the 2024-2025 student fee schedule. Dr. Schuler, any information?
This item came through your finance committee that at their last meeting reviewed the proposed student fee schedule for next year. Just as a reminder for the board, in the, the second year of the pandemic, we reduced all of the student fees in the district by about 50%. We've not reset those fees, we've maintained them at that level. Important to note that we are in the year now where the federal recovery dollars that came to districts through the pandemic are falling off of the, the revenue stream. And so the only adjustment that we've proposed making in the student fee schedule is the addition of a consumable fee for a math workbook at the elementary, middle school level. So we are using a new consumable book with the, the new curriculum materials. And so we are proposing adding that consumable fee. All other fees would stay the same.
Board, any questions?
I have one question. Would the fee also be waivable for students that are on the free and reduce lunch?
Yes, yes. All, all fees, if, if a student is on free and reduce, all fees are waived. It doesn't matter whether it's consumable or not. We just wanted to separate it out rather than actually add it to the, to the base fee to be as transparent as we can on where those fees are coming from. I think also important to note, and Mr. Long, or Mr. Jerpy may mention this. The finance committee does want to do a more thorough review of all fees as we look ahead to, to future years. Again, just fully reflective of the fact that we did reduce those fees. A big reason for that were the federal resources that came into the district that we wanted to make sure not only supported learning recovery efforts, social emotional efforts, some of the, the additional supports we put in place coming out of the pandemic, but we wanted to use those dollars to support families as much as possible as well. That's why you made the decision on fees. And so again, as those resources fall off on the revenue side, I do think it's important as we look ahead to review those fees as we look to next year. Doesn't mean we're going to raise all of them, but I think it's time to give them a very thorough review.
Board, any additional questions?
Yes, sorry, one additional, one additional comment if you can hear me all right. I did have some community members point out to me that the curriculum materials are free. While that is factually correct, we have to get them printed in student hands somehow. And as Dr. Schuler and the administrative team pointed out, the way that we're getting those materials is resulting in the highest quality material for the cost. I don't know, Dr. Schuler, if you want to add anything? you want to add anything?
Yeah, I can. And Mrs. Murphy, can you add, do you want to add the original kind of start with the printable and then to the consumable?
We started by having our print shop print the IM materials that are available for free, but at the request of our staff, we made the shift to making a purchase for the workbook that adds features that are important to the instruction, such as things that are in color.
Board, any additional questions or comments?
Is it anticipated that with bookworms going forward, like next year, we would add that as a consumable?
We will certainly review that as a part of all of the fees. There is a consumable tied to that. I think as we discuss that at Finance, again, we wanted to get through full implementation, right, make sure that we were fully settled in that curriculum. We will review that and see where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the 2024-2025 student fee schedule as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Blatner, second by Mr. Paulson. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we have one oral report tonight. It's the middle school capital projects discussion. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, I'm going to bring Michael Doltar up to the podium. So as the board will remember, at your committee of the whole meeting, you reviewed a revised set of facilities concepts for your three middle school capital plans. So just resetting context, when we began the review of our middle school needs, we had developed kind of multiple options, ways to address the needs that we had. We took a pause on the concept development, secured some feedback from the community through a few rounds of community feedback, used that feedback then to go back to the design, the concept design, and that's what came in front of you at your last meeting. And so Mr. Doltar is just going to review and provide some additional detail in the areas that we're moving forward. I do want to say, as we continue these conversations at each meeting, we're going to do it through these four kind of main buckets of work that are actually taking place. So the four major things that we're doing right now around the facilities plan development, A, the program development itself, so reviewing the concepts, putting additional detail to the concepts that Michael will talk about, two, refining the budget development. So we had a range of costs. We look forward very soon to getting that refined to a single concept development that that will then continue to get refined as we move through more detailed design development. Three, we're going to come back to the discussion around implementation schedule, not trying to solve that certainly tonight, but we want to get a little feedback on how, as a board, you'd like to move that discussion forward, whether you want to do that through one of your committees or do that kind of all together as a board as starting point. And then we're going to talk a little bit about continued community engagement and that plan moving forward. So, Michael?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Can you hear me here? Thank you, Dr. Schuler, and thank you, board. Good evening. Mike Doltar, Perkins &amp; Will. Again, just it's same process that we, that Dr. Schuler just described here. We're going to go through those four major components of the project here, the program, budget, implementation, and engagement. When we talk about program development, we're looking at adding additional specificity to the information that has been developed to date. So we've been looking at a very high level for the overall concepts that have been developed. So we're looking to continue to add information, continue to bring in additional voices into the process, making sure that we leave opportunities for all stakeholders to be involved in the process of this, so that we're, when we're coming to more and more refined program elements and designs, and then that leads to a more and more refined budget. So it's all tied together when we look at the overall process. So our engagement strategy is really focused on two pronged approach, where we're going to be looking, we have taken the concept diagrams that have been developed with leadership, and we've broken those down into major concept areas. Some of those are school specific, and some of those we're going to be looking at on a district-wide standpoint. When we talk about looking at them from a district-wide, we're talking about elements like science labs or standard classroom fit out, the exploratory labs, those specific elements that are going to be distributed amongst each one of the schools, but is important to look at from a holistic standpoint. So the idea is to bring representatives from each one of the schools, also to have representatives from Hubble be able to be, to voice in what has worked, what's not working, what things can be changed, what, how we can learn from those models that have been established at each three schools. So we're using the power of all the schools together to really come up with a process as well as a facility design that can be implemented at all, at the three schools that are going to undergo renovations. We talk about school specific, there's going to be a lot of shared components that are at each one of the schools, but there's a different sort of viewpoint at each one of the schools on those. So we're going to be looking at the specific implementation of those components at each one of the schools. There's a performing arts component at Monroe, at Franklin, at Edison. They're going to look a little different on each one of those. So we're going to look at them when we talk with the users on there. So we're establishing those user groups with the schools so that we can have a better understanding of what the specific needs of the specific program elements are at each one of those schools. That timeline here, we're looking at a two-pronged approach to the very first start of this engagement process. It's not the end of the process, it's just the beginning. So as we move through the very first part of that, the design process, if you remember the diagram that we sent, that we had laid out last time that showed the sort of the continuum of the design process as well as the gathering of information and how engagement happens throughout the entire design process, so that we go from, you know, having a lot of unknowns to really whittling away at that so we have more and more knowns to that. This very first part of the process helps us really narrow down a lot of that. So we've broken that down into two separate processes, which we'll be working with the schools to develop the schedule for. Stage one here, sort of straddles spring break, where we have a higher level discussions with the users, make sure that the scope that has been developed is in alignment with the needs for the space, for the spaces, understand what the specific needs are for each one of the components that we've talked about previously, and then we start taking those, that information and really putting a more architectural solution to it, so that when we come back in stage two, we have more and more information that we can present as a mirror back to the users so that we can continue to refine that. And after we get through our stage two schematic design review, we're going to be in a position where we can continue to develop those documents to a stage where additional budgeting can be put into that. So we're adding more and more information, we're getting more and more voices. We want to make sure, again, that this process is as representative as possible as we move through, throughout here, especially in these first stages, because they are a critical foundation for the rest of the project. Any questions there?
I do have a question on what you presented. When you talked about getting feedback from users, two questions on that. First of all, we've talked about before the feedback from the educators in the building and how they use the space. I know each building has a building committee that is kind of the central hub for that feedback. Is the feedback just coming from them, or is it a chance for any teacher or educator in the building to provide feedback?
That's a great question. We had focused, when we were looking at the master plan, on a more consolidated building team use. We're going to be branching out so that we're touching as many of the users as we can. It's going to be kind of up to the, to each school to develop what the team is going to look like for each one of those components. But generally speaking, we want to get as much input as we can, if we can get, you know, representatives from each one of the content areas into a room separately, talk about those specific areas, because those are the experts in the building about how, what the current state is, as well as the future state wants to be.
And then when getting the user feedback, is there also a mechanism for getting student feedback?
That's a good question. I don't know that we've established that as of yet. I think it's an important thing that we do as we move through the process. Very good point, something that we should look to roll into the process.
I have a question, and I may just be misunderstanding. So my thought is that generally all of the middle schools should have consistency in the implementation of programs. So are you suggesting that things might look differently depending on the needs of a specific school?
It
Because I think those needs could change over time. So I think the consistency is more important than
Right. I think it tends to be that there's, that there are different specific needs at different specific schools because the facilities currently are disparate amongst each one of those schools. So
That helps. That makes sense. The needs to make it more consistent.
Right.
The ultimate goal is to have the consistency.
Yes, yeah, because we have one overarching, you know, team that's working on the project here. We're going, there's going to be consistency amongst that for sure. But if we look at like facilities, if you look at the diagram, you know, the facilities that, at, just using the theater facility as an example, you know, the theater at Monroe is going to look different than the theater at Franklin. So there's going to be some specific components in there that are going to be slightly different here. But generally speaking, we want to make sure that there's a, that there is a blanket consistency amongst the district.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So the next major item here is budget development. As we said, you know, a lot of the, all of the development of the project scope that we're working on is really, is really intended to provide more clarity on the overall budget development. You know, if you look at it as a simplified three-step process here, our first step is really, is going on right now. The construction manager, Nicholas and Associates, is working on taking the revised documents that have been provided, those documents that we reviewed at our last meeting, and then putting some additional refinement of cost to those. So we had, we have been looking at a wide variety of options previously. We had a few different approaches to budgeting at that point. We have a consolidated approach to that now. We can build a new cost model based upon that. And then we are going to be, as Dr. Schuler said, consistently updating that throughout the process. So we update the budget based on the input that we get from the users, the refinement that we put through the narratives. We make sure that we revisit the alignment of the budget to the prioritization. So if we're out of alignment on budget, we got to understand where the prioritization is, because we want to set a, you know, a specific goal for overall budgeting, as well as how the prioritization and sequencing really meet into that. So once we establish the budget, we know what the priorities are, we can work on how it's going to be sequenced out based on the schedules that have been developed, and then we can really level set our expectations. We want to make sure that we're working towards those expectations at all stages here, communicating openly and clearly what those are, so that there's no, there's no misrepresentation of the project as we move forward.
Question. So is this where you want some feedback about our thoughts regarding timing?
The implementation part? I think you're almost there.
Okay.
Yep.
Then I'll save it.
I do have a question about
Yeah, please.
So this step one that's going on right now, is that going to have a, for lack of a better term, put a fence around it in terms of total dollar, or does that come after step two? And then the timeline for these steps?
Yeah, I think that's going to be your start in being able to do that, right? So we've got to get you to a projected cost currently, right, which then I think will allow the board to both put some
That's step one.
Yeah, we're getting there very soon.
Thank you. That answered my question. It, yeah, I guess just so timeline on that is soon, and then we would immediately move into step two?
Yeah, I would anticipate within, I would hope within the next week or two, we have an updated projected budget number, which will allow us to start moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
So the implementation development, as was presented at the last committee of the whole meeting, we had presented four potential scenarios for project scheduling, and you had an opportunity to review what those look like, and those are from a baseline conservative approach to a more aggressive approach, and some pieces in between. So looking at, you know, what are the moving parts and moving pieces throughout this, the process? What are the commitments for the district as you move through the process there too?
So Angela now would be?
Now's the time. I would just offer that, in looking through the different options that we went through last time, I'm just very uncomfortable with spending money before we know definitively where the community stands.
So I would see that you're kind of directing that toward like the aggressive schedule.
Correct. I would be directing us away from the aggressive schedule. So more towards option one, where we wait until we have an answer and then proceed, like unless the majority of that design money was towards those things that we must fix regardless of the answer in November. My thought.
I would just say, the committee of the whole, that was one of the questions that I know we had, is really understanding in all of these different options that design phases is one of the elements of what is that amount and how much would we have to do anyway?
So I missed the last meeting, but I did watch it. We had reviewed, John Rolig and I reviewed it at the facility committee meeting on the 23rd. So I guess three kind of core observations. First off, I thought the refinements over the last three, four months have been well conceived, well considered. I look back at the January 9th board meeting where we kind of reviewed 10 kind of core points and suggested steps. I feel pretty, I feel very comfortable that we're kind of following that model. There's still things ahead of us, which is logical at this point, but I'm feeling very comfortable that, you know, we're going through the right process, we're trying to get to the right solution. So two other points, maybe it's a Finance Committee thing to consider. You know, one of those points back in January was to kind of, once we know the potential, recommended budget, to go back to our Sherman Durges policy, and to maybe think about the idea, the benefit, the cost savings of doing all that Sherman Durges work in one fell swoop versus spread out over five, six, seven years. I'd love to see kind of a, see if there's any impact on a five-year financial forecast, which might kind of redirect some dollars in our budget to other needs. So that's kind of something on the funding or budgeting side. And then the final piece is, I agree with Angela's comment about the schedule. If we're going to make investment upfront of a potential community vote, I want to make sure that it's done with something that we're going to use, even if, you know, depending on the, regardless of the outcome, the one thing that I would just, something to put in our back of our minds, there is value, there's, I think there's going to be a lot of school construction going into the market in 2025, 2026. I'm familiar with a lot of very, very large referendums that are going to be coming ahead. Think about the process of, excuse me, going through the design process, going through the bidding process, putting construction. I'm very concerned about the capacity of the local Chicago area construction market, labor, materials. It's something we need to consider. There might be some advantage. I haven't really thought about the cost benefits, but there might be some advantage with trying to accelerate some of the work so we can get in front of that. I just worry about, you know, the state of the construction industry in the next 26, 27, 28. There's going to be, there's going to be a lot. So if you're in the construction business, buckle your seatbelt. I just say that it's as a, something to think about as we dig back into the different solutions or the different implementation options.
Brad, when you talk about the Sherman Durges, are you talking about Sherman Durges specific to the middle schools?
Well, yes, because within this program, there's a lot of work that would be, you know, building maintenance, building repairs, building infrastructure improvements that fall under the Sherman Durges formula, rather than spreading that out over, you know, five, six, seven years. We're going to be able to do it in a kind of a condensed timeframe. It might give us the opportunity, if the board, or the board at that time decides to kind of redirect some of those dollars to other operational budget issues, we can still kind of achieve the intent of Sherman Durges, but just doing it in a different way. So it's just kind of an analysis of all that infrastructure improvements at the three middle schools would be potentially funded in a different bucket, which could free up the dollars in our operating budget allocated towards Sherman Durges, not free them up, but maybe redirect them, or some of them.
Okay, thanks.
It's an opportunity that is worth vetting.
Yeah, I agree. I just wanted to understand what
It's hard to explain.
Yeah, I didn't exactly get Yeah, I didn't exactly get your point, but now I think I do. So thank you.
So I guess just question around that. So I heard a little bit of feedback on the, the schedules, some thought, uh, obviously around, uh, moving more toward, toward option one. Is that something that the, the board is comfortable with? Facilities committee continuing to investigate as we move some of this work forward? Again, obviously it's a decision that's gonna come back in front of the full board, but I'm just trying to make sure we can direct some of the detailed tasks to your right committee. So are we okay with facility committee continuing to move forward investigating that?
Yes. Mr. Jerpy?
Thank you.
So the last part, uh, I think, uh, Michael's moving into is community engagement. So again, you heard a little bit on, uh, internal, uh, community engagement and some of the plan development. Also wanted to call your attention to a document that's in your folder that's a draft communications, community engagement plan. Alyssa, do you, do you wanna just make any, any kind of immediate thoughts or comments on this community engagement plan that I think you brought forward, shared with the board's facility committee and we've continued to discuss?
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me? Yes, we put this together and, you know, first and foremost, we wanna make sure that we continue to engage the community. We wanna hear their feedback. So our hope is as these, um, plans are brought down to one concept, we want to invite the community back into our buildings, make sure that they're able to see these facilities and kind of talk them through what these plans look like. So we are gonna continue to keep our together200.net website updated. And so we're gonna continue to make sure the community knows about that, sees that, can find updated information on there. So we're currently working on that. And then this month, we are also working on, um, developing a plan and timeline for informal or informational, um, Facility Fridays features on social media and the website and in a, um, email that will be going out to the community every single week. And so this will kind of dive into that, um, 10-part series that we were talking about to give further, um, information about the projects that are happening and the needs that are in the building and how we're addressing that. And then again, kind of this summer, kind of outlining what those tours engagement sessions may look like.
So I think thought in terms of the planning stage, we'd anticipate that, uh, the concepts being refined to a point as we can near the end of the year. So that 10-part kind of communication sequence that Alyssa's talking about, uh, really targeting, uh, probably May into, uh, into summer. Again, we want to make sure that, that, uh, plans have level of specificity that we can accurately communicate both what is proposed to, to happen, what that impact is gonna be. So kind of that, that is all what's, what's embedded in the plan. Last thing, oh, sorry, go ahead, Eric.
Just as we reengage the community, one thing that I think would be helpful is providing a view of what does good look like? If one thing to show folks the condition of our schools today in different areas, but for someone who maybe hasn't been in a middle school in 30-plus years, having a benchmark, whether it's within our district or elsewhere, of what are we talking about doing? And what's a normal standard look like, I think would be helpful.
Yep, absolutely. And I, I think, uh, Michael, you can probably comment on this. I, I think as we move forward in design development, some of the design development is gonna help to bring, I think, some greater visual clarity around that as well.
Yeah, right. A, as we, as we, you know, bring all of the ideas together, we'll be able to have some visualization that shows, you know, what is the potential? Or what is the, what are we talking about when we talk about improvement of spaces? What, what does an improved science lab look like compared to what you, what you have right now? What it was, uh, what does an improved library learning center look like? We can, we can cite examples from, uh, other peer institutions, um, but providing that visualization of, of what that could be something that we want to do as well.
I think Julie asked a, a question that if, if it's, uh, okay, uh, I'd like to maybe ask our, our student ambassadors to kind of weigh in on that. This thought of like, how do we activate student voice or student engagement around this? So obviously you're at a, at a different place in terms of your vantage point in the system now as high school seniors. But as we think about designing some of the middle school spaces, you have any immediate thoughts on how to activate or get some of that feedback from the, the student body either currently at the middle schools or that have been through middle school?
Yeah, so I actually, I don't have a first period class. I have late arrivals, so I actually went into, um, a first period class. I asked one of my teachers if he was, let me in. And I asked some students in that class about how they felt about this plan, about what would happen at their middle schools. Obviously not everyone went to a district 200 middle school, but, um, overall the feedback from the students was positive then. But I know that, uh, our ambassadors from South have done similar things where they've gone into freshman access classes and they've asked those students about other things that you've asked for our feedback on. So, um, I'm sure that we could do similar things like that. But overall, from what I asked the students, they seemed pretty, pretty positive about what this plan entails.
So do you think, yeah, I think I just asked a question. Do you think feedback would be more valuable coming from high school students that have been through the, the middle school, kind of reflecting back?
I mean, I think that the middle schoolers would probably have a good idea of it as well. But I think after experiencing all three years of it, maybe, I mean, maybe some of the younger ones in high school as well would have a good idea of it. But I think that getting a perspective from both would probably be a good idea.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add on to what he said about middle schoolers. It's kind of a mixed bag of whether or not, like, I don't wanna make an assumption that all middle schoolers are like, oh, no, I don't care. But some of them might not and some of them do. I think it's like varying degrees. I do, if I remember correctly, Hubble used to have a team called the Student Ambassador Leadership Team. It was called SALT. I was never personally a part of it, but that might be, uh, like, if you find those leadership teams within the school, that might be the best thing. Cause it's, again, they're kind of like miniature student, miniature student ambassadors, if you will. I'm not sure if they still do it, but you could encourage, um, the creation of that. Another thing I do want to stress, you know, to the board and to the community is, uh, looking back as a high school student, um, where you learn, it does matter. Going into a super hot classroom or going into a classroom with no windows is not fun. I'm more compelled to come to school when I'm going into a classroom I want to be in. And, um, the teachers can do only so much to influence classroom culture. Sometimes simply having like a window in a classroom culture or updated, uh, at, or updated facilities is really important. So I would say in order to reach out to the middle schoolers, I would look for the leadership, like, look for the kids who really are gonna, you know, wanna connect with you. Because those, you know, walking into, uh, access classes was a great idea in theory, but, um, if I didn't chuck candy at them, they were not talking to me. So I had to be like, guys, please, please, I beg of you. But like, um, creating a leadership team, you know, finding those students that really do wanna talk. Cause I promise you, we exist. But most importantly, I would say like, look for those students who do, uh, wanna be there, who really, because that's where you're gonna get your most valuable feedback. And that's the people talking to a lot of other students.
One of the positions that I had, and I actually threw this around with a couple of peers in both my classes, but also, um, just, uh, teachers as well, is we have a very untapped network, I feel like, of alumni, a lot of students who went to Wheaton, Wheaton Warrenville South or Wheaton North, who graduated either two years ago or one years ago or five years ago, who kind of speak to their experience in taking classes. And I think the thing that I hear most commonly when I talk, I've had the, I lived with one of these people. He was my brother. I worked with some of these people. I know some of these people. And their big takeaways were STEM and performing arts. A lot of people find their place in life, um, through performing arts, whether that's singing, whether that's performing, whether that's playing an instrument. Any alumni who goes to either of our school who was in the band or in the show choir or even in the theater department would tell you that these are vital resources that allow people, one, to pursue their interests, but also at the same time to find people who share interests with them and really care about each other and develop these, uh, uh, very tightly knit communities that support them even into college. And I think that, uh, looking at that from the performing arts angle, all of that starts in the middle school level. And I think that, you know, Ethan raised a point about, um, the situation of the, being a mix between a cafeteria and a theater at Monroe. I think that at the Franklin Bandroom, we had problems with the sound, um, kind of quality and like the sound permeating through different rooms. And I think that at least from the performing arts perspective, at least talking to alumni, what I think the biggest impact has been is that it kind of brings people together. And I also think looking at STEM, you know, we often have conversations about AI. We often have conversations about what the future of the business world will really look like. But I think when push comes to shove, many of the opportunities that we afford our students through pursuing STEM, whether it be hard sciences like, um, chemistry and biology or social sciences like psychology or sociology, often will probably be the careers of the future. And I think that by talking to people either at the college level who are currently within those programs or people who are currently in the workforce, we can truly kind of understand how having these resources, especially at such a young age, can, one, foster these students to develop interests in, uh, fields of work that will come to benefit them in the future. And I also just think it's important to recognize, kind of to Kaylee's point, that these are the learning environments that we're in. And these are day in and day out where we are sitting, where we are learning, where we're making friends. And I would just say that broadly speaking, any opportunity to improve those, uh, environments is vital. And I would hazard to say that any student would tell you that.
Oh, there we go, okay. I just wanted to touch on what he said about performing arts spaces, cause that's like half of my life. So I just wanted to mention that real quick. Uh, I'm proud to say that I went to Monroe and Monroe had the highest student population involved in performing arts, but the only one that didn't have an actual functioning auditorium. And, uh, you heard him mention the cafeterium, which is its official name, which is kind of an everything space. You can really do anything in there. And I, when I first heard of this plan, I was really excited, um, to hear about, uh, the possible addition of an auditorium to Monroe. There's, I mean, you saw at the beginning of the board meeting today, some of the outstanding musicians. And, you know, Monroe and Franklin, Edison, Hubble, all four of our middle schools, they've done a tremendous job with the performing arts. And, um, I think it's really important that we have those spaces available for these students so that they can thrive even more. I mean, they're thriving in the facilities that they have now, but imagine what would happen if those spaces are even better. And another thing that, when I was talking to the students, um, one, another thing that they pointed out was they thought it was very important that obviously, you know, Monroe's the north side hub for the special ed, um, program. And they said that that's another thing that they find value in and they really think that should be improved as well.
Yeah, and I'd just like to end out here. Mrs. Berry and the Communications Department idea of Facility Fridays on social media is a great idea. A lot of people follow CSD 200. Obviously there's been some issues with our social media lately, but that's out of our control. Social media in general is pretty positive for our district. So I do like, I think, I think it is a great way to communicate with people. And I think that's an excellent idea. I saw it on the sheet and I was like, perfect. Especially because I think middle schoolers nowadays have social media to some extent. So maybe they can just see what's going on at their school, but it's important everybody's involved and people don't feel like left out of the project, especially if it's their school being renovated.
Thank you. Anything, anything else? So questions from anything that, uh, we've, we've covered? I think again, three major takeaways. Obviously the finance committee, um, will work on, uh, kind of refine budget number as we get that and start to put some of the related details with that. Facilities committee is gonna continue to move forward with kind of shepherding, uh, concept plan development and timeline implementation and a few of those options. I think we, we've got some feedback on how we can continue to engage some of our feedback groups incorporating students. And our intent is just to continue bringing updates kind of under these four buckets. We may not always have a lot to share at every meeting based on, on progress, but we wanna keep the conversation moving forward.
Thank you.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Sorry. I am definitely an advocate for the performing arts. I think Ethan said it beautifully, like, that I could probably give a dissertation on the importance of the performing arts. And I'm super excited about that. And I know there's no answer to this, but I'm still like, my hesitancy with most of this is I'm disappointed with the special ed situation with Monroe. Like, I just, we'll say that again. That's all.
But your point, you'd like to see it more in the, in the, in the.
Yes, more integrated into the school.
It wasn't the program itself, it was, it was where it's located.
Yes, please, no.
Perfect.
The program is amazing and, um, yeah, it just, being more visible, like, visibility is important.
Understood, thank you. Board, any more questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we're entering, we have no discussion items tonight. Real quick, through the committee report, so the facilities committee met on February 22nd. Meeting notes are attached to the agenda. Mr. Paulson, are there any additional comments you'd like to add? Okay. Thank you. Board Finance Committee met on February 26th and those notes are also on the agenda. Mr. Long, are there any additional comments?
Yeah, just, uh, just a few. We spent a little bit of time talking about the state budget proposal that the governor, um, put forth right before, you know, I think just a couple of days before that meeting. Important note, no impact on the assumptions in the five-year plan from that budget address. Lot of, lot of, um, things in there, evidence-based funding, early childhood block grants, categorical spending, you know, for things like transportation and so on. And, um, it's expected to go before the general assembly before they adjourn in May. So we did spend some time talking about that. Student fees, which we talked about earlier, um, you know, we're adding the, the $27 fee for the consumable for the workbooks. You know, what we're, we, the request was to look at comparables with other Luda districts, you know, understanding that we did come down significantly, you know, during the pandemic and we have not brought those back up. So we just wanna see how we are, um, compared to some of the other large, um, districts. But, I mean, important to note that those fees came down about 50%, right? And we have not increased those. And then, um, yeah, the, the middle school facilities, we've talked about everything that was covered there in the COW and then tonight. And, um, the last thing we talked about was the custodial and maintenance staffing, which we also talked about tonight. So that was it.
Thank you, Mr. Long. The board and, the Board HR Policy Committee met on February 29th. Meeting notes are attached in the agenda. Ms. Kullivitz, any additional comments?
Yes, so, um, at our meeting, we finished our review of the administrative procedures. So at the board, we adopt a policy. And then there's also a set of administration, administrative procedures that sits on the staff end that implements and operationalizes those board policies. So, uh, we finished reviewing the last section on personnel, uh, had some minor edits to that. Thank you, Angela. That was a heavy lift. I know we did this year and I appreciate all of your work on that. We also asked for an update on administrative, a new administrative procedure that, uh, will be rolled out next year for social media guidelines and digital communications, which provides some specific guidance for our staff on how to use those tools. In August, we discussed a framework and staff has been working on getting some feedback to understand what tools, uh, are used and what parameters are, are appropriate. So that's out for feedback with the building teams and it'll come back to us again. And then the full board with planned implementation for the 24, 25 school year. And lastly, um, we also had a follow-up discussion from our February 1st HR policy meeting on, uh, school discipline. So Dr. or Mr. Biskin took us through the process for overseeing discipline trends. So there's a discipline support team, which includes Dr. Salagi, who oversees student services, um, Matt Biskin, um, who oversees administration, and then the leads from our district on both social work and psychology. They review our discipline data on a quarterly basis with the building leads. And at the time of our meeting, they were getting ready to do those meetings, both at our high school and our middle school buildings throughout the district. So those reviews center on who's engaged in discipline issues and making sure that we identify students that might need more supports or groups of students. And then what patterns or trends do we see about different locations or type of incidents? And how do we need to respond in terms of reallocating supervision, things like that? Mr. Biskin did identify, um, some coding issues with some discipline data. And so set a training for the summer to make sure that there's better consistency on that throughout the district so that, uh, analysis, uh, we can, uh, continue to do. And then our staff, uh, he also reported on the staff continued training and de-escalation that's done each year. That's the recap.
Thank you. Board, any questions on any of the committees?
Yeah, and there, there was a note in the update on digital communications about some potential challenges generationally. It sounded like maybe a training issue. I was wondering if maybe you could speak to that a little bit more, what's the generational difference, like, separation of accounts might be?
Yes, and it, it wasn't really a generational, uh, challenge with younger teachers, but more that they were better adept at it. So, um, part of the policy is just making sure it's clear what our school approved counts and what our personal accounts. And so we were just asking, uh, Mr. Biskin, um, you know, if there was any generational trends he was seeing. And he was saying that our younger teachers, um, are really adept at understanding the separation between the two.
Any addition, any additional questions? All right, uh, any reports from board members? I'll say something. Mr. Paulson?
First off, um, applaud our high school ambassadors who spoke tonight. I'm very proud of you and all this, even the ones who gave public comment. I didn't want to really talk about this, but something happened up here at the board table tonight that I've never seen in my 11 years on the board. When we were dealing with the audio issues, myself and Mr. Handlin, we were approached by community members, got in our face. Mr. Handlin, we were approached by community members, got in our face. It was, it was ugly. I've never seen anything like this before. It's very disappointing. And I wish everybody had a chance to hear what you said. And that didn't happen. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Any other comments? Go ahead, Eric.
Yes, I was able to attend the last CAC meeting. And obviously, those minutes will be published with the next Board meeting. But the topic was artificial intelligence again. And I just wanted to comment that the level of engagement in that meeting was extraordinarily high. So clearly, this is a topic of interest to the broader community. And I think similar to what we saw when it was presented at the Board meeting, there were a lot of different angles that folks had. People who were very wary of it, why would we go near this? And at the other end, people who were, you know, talking about the fact that we would be remiss if we didn't embrace this because it's a skill set, a technology that will be key to success for our students. So again, I don't know that pointed to any clear directional guidance from the community, but I just thought the level of engagement was very high. And so I wanted to comment on that. The other report out of that meeting is that they are still seeking membership for the CAC for next year. I believe that application is open for at least another week. And so just wanted to make sure to take every opportunity to comment about the fact that CAC is a very important input to the Board, to the administration. And so I would encourage members of the community to consider applying for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Coles?
One question, then a comment. Can you remind again what schools are sort of high priorities for having representatives on CAC?
Johnson, Lincoln, and I believe Emerson was the third one.
And then the, the comment is each, each of us board members have adopted schools. And I had a chance to visit one of my adopted schools of Longfellow and got to participate in a Student of the Month celebration that they have. And it was just great. It's part of, they have an SEL committee at the school, and it was, grew out of that and just making sure to recognize the positive behaviors that they see in their students. And so, you know, the teachers ate, ate lunch with their students, which I have some elementary kids myself. And I'm amazed at how, how excited they get to have lunch with their teachers. And I was so impressed at the teachers that gave up time. They could have been spending planning for lessons or having lunch themselves. And so they sat around the room and each teacher got up and just said what they saw in students. And they just saw some amazing, really good things in our students. And it was cool because some students were, you know, students that maybe excelled academically or in other ways. And some students were maybe students that didn't always get recognized. And teachers went out of their way to challenge them in some way and point out where they had grown. And so it was a really cool celebration. And thanks to Longfellow for inviting me into that.
Thank you. Any other comments, Board? All right. All right, we have, reminded, there's four written reports on the website, our monthly financial reports, our Freedom of Information Act report, our Board Communication Log, and our Citizens Advisory Committee report. We have three topics for future discussion: the comprehensive update on safety, security, and student wellness, the middle school facilities plans, and then also the food service RFP. Board, are there any additional topics you want considered for future discussion? All right, hearing none. Our next regular Board meeting is going to be on April 10th at 7 o'clock at Emerson Elementary School. Our next committee of the whole meeting will be April 24th at 7:00 PM at the School Service Center. We will be moving into closed session tonight. And so Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act exemption, 5 ILCS 120/2 Part C, Part 1, and 5 ILCS 120/2 Part C, Part 9. So moved, second. Moved by Mr. Paulson, second by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, so action is expected following the closed session. We're adjourned to closed session.